Everybody turn your microphones on, just a reminder to silence your cell phones. We're gonna call the meeting to order at three o'clock. Please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Approval of the agenda for December 5th, 2023 meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda, but I understand that there is gonna slight change to it.
Uh, there has, but we can approve it as, as is.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for December 5th, 2023. Pruegel.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Okay, the agenda has been approved. Item number four, approval of minutes. As you guys will recall, in November, we were, had the question whether we could vote if we were absent for the October meeting. Joanne has got that verified, that we can vote on that, so we are gonna revote on the minutes for the October 3rd, 2023 meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the, to the minutes from October 3rd? And if not, I'm open to a motion to approve.
I move we approve the minutes for the October 3rd, 2023 meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from October 3rd. All in favor? Pruegel.
Aye.
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 And next is our approval over the minutes from our November 8th, 2023 meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I, I couldn't locate the minutes. I didn't have them in the packet and I, they weren't on the website.
I don't have them either.
The minutes don't go on the website until they're signed by Mark.
No. Did you see?
So, as soon as he signs them today, then I can post them on the website. If they were, I'll end up having to.
I couldn't find mine.
The rest of you would.
I couldn't find them, but that's not unusual.
Well, if, if we've had it, if any, if you've had a chance to go through the minutes, I'm open to a meeting. Uh, motion, motion?
I can't vote if I haven't read them, right?
We'll just never tell.
Oh, we're not. I, I can pass them around if you wanna vote on the end. I have an extra copy.
Um, yeah, I suppose if I'm the only one with a copy of them, um, yeah, we should probably pass them around.
Is this all one set of minutes? Holy cow.
Prove that real quick.
I will.
Since the minutes are smaller, I can do a email to the group with the agenda and the minutes, if that would be easier, because you're saving so much in your comp books with all the regulations changes and stuff, that maybe it's just getting pushed somewhere.
That would probably be helpful, the minutes and the agenda from the last meeting. John?
Hello?
Yeah, I don't have one either. Quite a bit there.
We're taking a minute to go through the minutes from November, um, as they weren't on the, in the packet, so. All right, now that we've all had a chance to go through the minutes, um, from the November 8th, 2023 meeting, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I've got an AC.
If not, I'm open to a motion.
Make a motion we approve the minutes for November 8th, 2023, as written.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for November 8th, 2023. All in favor? Gardner?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, guys. Thank you for going through that so quickly. We're gonna move into unfinished business. Uh, our unfinished business from the November meeting, minor sub 23-004. Dan, if you could fill us in on what's going on with that?
All right. Hello, gentlemen. Um, a little bit earlier today, we received an email from the consultant, Matt Koch, and, um, it reads Yoder Minor Sub. We would like to cancel the application for the Yoder Minor Subdivision. Thank you. So, um, no more explanation or anything about it, so this just came in this afternoon.
Thank you. All right. We were gonna move past that. We're gonna move right into our new business.
The, may I, may I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
Thank you. The, so they are canceling the application. That means if they want to continue or to revive this, it's like a brand-new application. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it would be a brand-new application. This, this is now canceled and, uh, void.
Full, full cancellation, no rights retained. They've gotta come before us for, to start over.
Yes, sir, it'd be a fresh application.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that. Any other questions on the Yoder?
Any benefits of doing that? Or they just didn't have it together yet?
None that I'm aware of. Um, there, there hasn't been a lot of dialogue on this one, so, um, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, and now we will move into new business. Um, Dan, you wanna take us through your requests?
All right, um, so to continue on with the rewrite of the zoning resolution, uh, we have here three chapters. Um, the first chapter is going to be the proposed Chapter 2, which is the establishment of zone districts. And, um, planning and zoning has recognized the need for a review and update of the regulations. Staff has made no changes to the following Chapter 2 besides a new, new format, and we reference a future proposed Chapter Number 9, um, and that's it. So, we, we reference a new chapter that we're gonna be doing, and we reformat it, and this is exactly as it was.
Okay.
If this commission, uh, has a favorable recommendation, this will have an adoption date in April of 2024, and if any substantial changes are made to this draft, uh, these sections will be presented to this commission for further recommendations.
So, thank you. Do you want us to vote on these individually, Dan?
Might be easier.
Okay. Uh, is there any questions for Dan concerning the request rewrite of Chapter 2? Okay, if not, I am open to a motion.
I move we, um, approve the rewrite of Chapter 2 zoning regulations. Is that enough?
Yes. I will second that motion to approve the rewrite of Chapter 2. Gardner?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We are gonna move into the rewrite of Chapter 5, General Requirements. Dan?
All right, so here we have the Chapter 5, General Requirements. Again, the Planning and Zoning Department has recognized the need for review and update to the regulations. Staff has made a few changes, deletions, and additions to this chapter. All changes are highlighted and noted for your review. Highlights, um, that we are proposing uh, to the new regulation will be yellow, and stragglings are what we are proposing to delete or move to a different section. Um, again, uh, the proposed rewrite, if viewed favorable, will have an adoption date of April 2024, and if any substantial changes, uh, to the section are, uh, will be presented to this commission for further recommendations. So, as we start going through this, um, on the first page there, uh, we have the allowed uses requiring permit. We've added a new use agretainment. We've, uh, we've had a bunch of people inquiring about that within the county, um, and we did not have a use that fit it. So, we now have a use and description. Um, in previous, uh, regulations that I've brought up, the contractors' yard 1 and 2, the differentiation, the difference between, um, a less intense contractor's yard and a more intense, uh, the limited winery there, we had the description of that listed in the uses, which it didn't belong. So, um, a lot of what we're doing here is to help clean up, um, clean up the regulations and put all of, uh, all of the kind of miscellaneous stuff that wasn't in the right spot in one location. So, trying to make improvements on this one. Um, so, yeah, so Farm and Ranch Hands Quarters, we have, uh, the definitions. Again, that was another one that, uh, the use, or the description of the use was described in the uses and not in a different section where, so it was located where it didn't belong. So, let's see here. We have, um, let's see, the, the accessory dwelling unit, um, we have the definition of allowed uses, or the description of allowed uses that require a permit and list out the different uses. Provisions, the application requirements. Um, before, our home ocs were kind of a scavenger hunt to find in the regulation, the regulations currently there. So, we have all of those in one easy-to-find location. Let's see here. We have the development requirements of the contractors' yard 1 and 2. Limited winery, um, all of this, all of this verbiage, um, besides the agretainment and the contractors' yard 2 is exactly what the regulations currently had. They just were in the wrong spot.
Okay.
So, let's see, as we flip through a little farther, let me see if there's anything notable. We're on 5.7, where it talks about building permits. Um, we consulted with the building department to get the correct language. Um, so that portion of our regs, um, it was already in there, but we got, uh, updated language from the building department, so it complies with their department as well. And then, the, the one noticeable thing here is 5.8, the drainage plan and report. We've actually had discussions, and rather than referring somebody back to the subdivision regulations, we feel the drainage plans, since we're calling them out in the zoning resolution, should have their own spot in the zoning resolution. So, one change, um, that's worth noting is that 5.8 is gonna be a separate chapter that gets presented, a standalone drainage plan requirement chapter. So, that 5.8 there, um, as presented right now, is, is gonna get removed from there and made its own chapter at the end. So, there is one revision to this. And that is it for this section.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Dan concerning the rewrite of Chapter 5, General Requirements?
You talked about contractor yards and, uh, two different levels of, uh, activity in them. Is that what it caught?
Yes, sir. So, right now, the contractor's yard, um, let's see, ones that were started before a certain time period are allowed to exist, um, without permitting. And then, in some zone districts, a contractor's yard 1 is allowed right now without permitting, but if you wanted to have a contractor's yard 2, it would require permitting. Um, so there, it's basically an intensity level, uh, and different zone districts, the larger zone districts typically allow, uh, a more intense use. So, in some instances, you may be allowed to have a contractor's yard 1 without permitting, but you'd have to go to a contractor's yard 2 with permitting, depending on the, the scale of what you're proposing.
Okay.
So, it, um, we're trying to keep, you either have to go through a, uh, an SRU in a more intense permitting process to have it on a smaller lot, or if you have a larger lot, it's an easier ask.
Contractor 2 would be in the 3D.
Yep, okay. In all districts.
Yes, so it only refers to, or new contractors 2 will be, that will be in a 3D chapter. So, that's where you're gonna see the breakdown of the contractor 2.
Um, Dan, are you allowing heavy truck traffic parking, you know, the heavy ATM liter type trucks in a contractor yard? Or how are you handling that?
Um, so with, obviously with the SRUs, there'd be a roadway impact analysis, and all of the type of, either way, the, the types of vehicles have to be designated, um, what you're gonna be using. Um, I believe the contractor's yard 1 doesn't allow for the larger vehicles, if I'm correct, Danielle?
We, we allow for, um, no more than five vehicles associated, associated with the contractor.
So, if you wanted more than five, that bumps you into that contractor's yard 2, but the types of vehicles you're gonna be using, um.
But you would allow that kind of parking in a contractor yard designation?
Uh, in contractor's yard 2, yes, um, as long as it's, it stays in the level of contractor's yard and doesn't try to bump into like trucking terminal or something different. It depends at, how people are proposing it. Um, so we have to, they have to submit everything to us to make sure that they're, they're maintained, they're falling into the correct use.
Dan, I've, I've got a question on the number of vehicles. We limit it to no more than five, the, and it, and we specify vehicles. The, um, so, is there, is there a reason that we're concerned about the number of vehicles?
Um, typically, the more vehicles that are gonna be there, the more intense the business is gonna be. So, um, that's why we're trying to safeguard the surrounding properties to make sure that the use is gonna be compatible. That's, that's pretty much how it is. Um, currently, isn't it, what's the current vehicle count with the contractor's yard? Yeah, so, um, yeah, so we're, we're trying to make sure that the use isn't gonna be too intense and have a negative impact to the neighborhood.
Okay, the, um, in terms of vehicles, that, so if they had a couple of motorcycles out there, they could only have three other vehicles then in the yard, is that correct?
So, we would be looking at it as the vehicles associated with the business, and, um, not the private vehicles that would be, uh, for like a residential use. So, if the person lives there and, and wants to run their landscaping business out of it, if they had two cars with a house, that, that would be for a residential purpose, they, um, the vehicle count would count towards their business, what they're using for their business.
So, the vehicle count would count in the, for the total of the contractor yard?
Yes.
Okay, if, if they were using their privately-owned vehicles for their commercial purpose?
Yeah, so if they're using, say, their private pickup is also their, their work truck, then that counts towards the vehicle, but, you know, if it's their grocer-getter, um, that's not associated with the business, then we would not count that.
So, so that, that's really the, 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 the issue that I see is by just specifying five vehicles without further modification of what kind of vehicles. It seems to me that it would be appropriate to say, um, five business-related vehicles or something like that, because we're, we're not trying to, I don't think that we're concerned about if somebody has an ATV that they've got parked there for storage or something like that, counting against the five total. I don't think that's our.
I, I can absolutely add, um, some language to that to make it more specific.
I think, mm-hmm.
So, yeah, that, that's an easy revision for us to put in there.
That, from, from my perspective, it's always better if we, that, you know, the, if we can be specific about what we're trying to regulate, because if you read this as a member of the public, when you read it as a member of the public, sometimes it just raises questions about what, what's being regulated, what are the limits, you know, what, what exactly is going on here? And so, so some additional language would be appreciated.
I don't disagree at all. That'd be an easy revision. We can add that in there.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe. Um, sure, um, if you would like to ask a question, please come up to the microphone. Tell me, tell us who you are first, and then, uh, please turn it on.
My name is George Ball with Crown Point Land Services, and is this roadworthy vehicles? Or just vehicles in general? Cause something that is transported on a trailer to get someplace, is that gonna be considered a vehicle?
That would be, uh, you're sounding like you're talking about.
Like a bulldozer, you know, on a trailer.
So, that would be, fall under the special mobile machinery, and that would have to be registered as part of the vehicle. It's, so that, no, that, if you had equipment associated with your business, that's equipment, not vehicles. Vehicles would be your, your pickups or, or whatnot.
Pickups and tractor trailers to pull a trailer, not necessarily the equipment.
If, if you have equipment that is gonna be towable, then that's, that's, we're not gonna consider that a vehicle, but you will have to have current SMM.
I, I would suggest you put something in it about that.
Well, equipment's different than a vehicle.
Well... Yes and no.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm trying to help out, guys. I'm not trying to create a problem.
Thank you, George. And I think that goes along with what you were saying, kind of defining a little bit more, um, what five vehicles are allowed in that usage. Thank you. Thank you, George. Any other questions?
Yeah, I went up on the agretainment, permitted uses. First thing I think of when I see that, rodeo grounds and open arenas? Not allowed?
So, now the, the rodeo grounds and stuff like that?
Sorry. Um, rodeo grounds are, uh, the rodeo grounds that we have right now are like spectator events. In agretainment, we, we kind of specifically break it out into, um, such as, but not limited to, say, orchards, corn mazes, hayrides, hay mazes, petting zoos, pumpkin patches. We're, we're talking, um, we're talking more like that. If you wanted to have an actual rodeo ground or something, uh, that'd be a spectator event. That would be a different type of use. That'd fall into a different category.
The, the, I don't think the rodeos generally.
Don't think the rodeos generally let people pet the bulls, you know, so. Uh, I did have a question on the building permits.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and what we're saying is that, uh, we have the, the permits required paragraph, and that includes a lot of, um, usual type activities that people can conduct, but we say that, um, this, uh, covers any residential, commercial, or industrial structure, which is regulated by the current Fremont County Building Code. So, once again, if I'm reading this as a, as a member of the public, my question is, well, gee whiz, I wanna, I wanna put up new wallpaper in my dining room. That's a repair or a refurbishment. Do I need to get a permit for that? Uh, and so what, what are the, what are the activities? I, we, we've got the general requirement that, uh, with structures which are regulated by the building code.
Mm-hmm.
So, that, that includes houses, uh, and if you're altering repair, doing any alterations, any repairs, you have to get a building permit inside your house?
So, and that's all a building department, um, question. Uh, I believe they have interior remodeling permits, but I don't know at what level, uh, a remodeling permit would kick in. Um, planning and zoning, we typically go from, you know, we permit the structure, um, we don't do anything on the inside for the most part. Uh, so, when, when we had this, we had this section in our regulations, and we ran it past, uh, the building official, and this is the specific language he gave us to, so that way our regs would match us. And that way, we wouldn't have any discrepancies like we've had in the past on some things. And that way we wouldn't have any discrepancies like we've had in the past on some things.
Um, the, uh, I, I understand the, the reasons that, that we like conformance, one regulation with another, so that there's no differences between the regulations, but the, it seems to me that, that there needs to be something in here about what, what is not, what does not trigger a building permit? Because right now, the way, the way that I read it, you know, alter, repair, um, alter and repair are the words that, that concern me because alterations and repair are, are pretty broad, broad words. And it seems to me that, and that's why, that's the basis of my question, what, what does not require a building permit? Because I, if we're, if these are our regulations, these are our regulations. And we want to, we want to be able to tell people when they're supposed to get a building permit. And so this seems to indicate that almost any activity that you might can, um, you know, conduct in your home for alteration or repair would require a permit. And I'm not sure that's, that's the case.
Yeah. So typically what we do is that, um, whenever anyone contacts us and has any questions about what they're going, what they need to do, we let them know what our responsibilities are, and then we send them, right, we transfer them down to the building permit or put the building inspector, one of his staff members in touch with them, so that way they can explain what are the requirements. Um, so yeah, our, our goal with this one was to have conformity, so that way we weren't conflicting, but I, I see at the same time, um, how that could create additional questions.
So would it, here, here's a question then, would it be better to, rather than trying to mirror the language that the building department has, to say it's a responsibility residential, commercial, or industrial structure owners to consult with the building permit department to determine if a permit is needed, rather than having requirements in our code that, that we, that we, we can't tell, if we can't, if we can't explain to people what the requirements mean, if we have to refer them to a, a different agency, why should we have the requirements in our code? We should just have the requirement that they have to go over there. And then from our perspective, we, it's just a box that we check then, correct? Is that?
Yeah. So typically, we would transfer them down to the building department to get the exact information, so that way we don't miss something that is another department's wheelhouse. So we would transfer them down to, you know, that expert, and then when they make an application with the building department, then it comes down to our office for that, um, our portion of the review. Um, I, that could be simplified, um, so that way it's, it doesn't turn into, let me refer you to someone else.
Well, I mean, I guess I would agree. I would, I would say exactly that. I would say refer to building department's requirements and just don't put anything.
Okay.
You know, I mean, just simplify it to that extent.
Sure. The, the, you know, it's, the, one of the things I think that's, that's our responsibility as a planning commission is to make sure that, that we have clear, understandable, and achievable regulations. And when we have requirements here that we're, we're not going to enforce, we're going to refer them to some other agency or department within the county, that, that I think we just should say that in our regulations.
Yeah, and I could absolutely simplify that and, um, put in the, refer to the building department requirements or, um, and then would you guys, so to continue, continue on that, five, seven, one, do you think that would be, do you still want that portion in there where it talks about the, um, requirements for building permit issuance?
I don't think there's any need for it to be there.
Think acts that right up to?
Yeah, I think they, they define that, and so if they ever make a change, we would not need to make a change.
Okay.
Right. Exactly. That's another, that's another good reason is to just put it, dump it all on them, you know?
For lack of better terms. Yeah. No, I, I think that's, I think that's probably wise. That way we're not misinterpreting something that the building department should interpret, is that we just point them there for everything.
Yep. And, and that absolutely makes sense. Um, yeah, our, our take on it was that we wanted to make sure that we were in step with another department, so we asked him what he liked for the verbiage and, and it was supplied. So, but we can absolutely refer to, and then that way the expert tells them what is needed and that.
Yes. And in that case, if they ever change their verbiage and not ours, we won't have a mismatch. It'll just say.
Refer to them.
Refer to them. Thank you, Dan.
Fantastic. Um, I can make those revisions.
Okay.
Dan, to kind of change the, the discussion a little bit, I've been looking at these regulations, trying to figure out how these would fit in and, and, and kind of work together with this affordable housing initiative that we've been hearing about. Have you given a lot of thought to this? I mean, it seems to me like when we start looking at very specific requirements, every time we add a requirement, we kind of eliminate some possibility somewhere down the line. As, as just a general matter, I mean, I, I'm looking at, I'm looking at these requirements to have lots that are 300 feet wide and, and no more than two, and it were two times that in depth, rectangular, fronting on a street. Um, I mean, they all sound really good, but how does that fit into this affordable housing initiative that, that we're, that we're supposed to be looking at?
Um, it's a struggle. I mean, if I'm being honest, um, you know, the, the one way to make things affordable is to relax regulations as much as possible. Um, it, right now, the gentleman doing the affordable housing audit have, um, copies of our regulations, and they have the, the current Fremont County zoning resolution, and they have an audit of that, but they also have what changes we're making. And believe it or not, a lot of the changes we're making are changes that they're recommending. Um, but since we're presenting this before they're able to present their portion of it, we didn't know that we were going to be beating them to it on some of these things that, for lack of a better way to explain it, a lot of the things that they're proposing to us, um, are revisions that we're already making. So we're, we're moving in the right direction with what's in front of you, but when the affordable housing audit comes and gets presented, there's going to be a, a bunch of revisions to this too, to help relax certain things. So it, it's kind of a two-step process. Um, one of the priorities when I came back here was, they were hoping that the, somebody would get started on the fixing the regs. It just so happened that at the same time a grant was given to the affordable housing folks, so we're, we're all working together, but we're kind of a little separate right now. So you, you will see additional changes to this. Um, the way the regulations are working right now is without factoring in, um, what the affordable housing guys are, are going to be proposing, um, in March, I'm going to be bringing back everything that has been approved by, um, this commission and the BOCC with final tune-up fixes before the formal adoption date. So while we're, we vote on a, an April formal adoption date to put the whole thing into place, um, it's going to be presented back to this commission and the BOCC and available for public comments with minor tweaks in March. So.
Will we be afforded a copy of their recommendations?
Absolutely.
So that we can put them alongside what we're doing here and?
Yes.
And kind of cross-reference them?
Yes. Yeah, so, um.
And this will happen before April?
This will happen before April, yes, sir. Um, so yeah, so the affordable housing, all of these regulations are getting presented to this commission and the BOCC, and then the affordable housing, um, changes are going to be presented. And then there's going to be a final presentation of all of it with all the tweaks, the final copy for a final adoption for that April date. So, when I was commenting earlier, that things are busy.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Um, on page forty-eight, there was the, uh, resolution for the ADUs and back in twenty-two.
Yes.
And one of the provisions, it was of nine-three-four. So it's forty, forty-eight of our, our packet, and it was, uh, nine-three is general provisions, nine-three-four is the ADU shall be a minimum of 250 square feet, and then it struck out maximum of 1,000 square feet with no more than two bedrooms. Looks like the intent was to strike that out.
Yes.
And then on page four of our, uh, of what we're putting in here, looks like it was being, uh, put in, shall have a minimum gross floor area of the 250 square feet and a maximum of 1,000 square feet. So my question is, so back in twenty-two, it was deemed wise to take out that thousand max, and now we're putting it back in? So just, just a question.
The thousand square feet is one of the things that we're, um, reviewing. Uh, a lot of folks are trying to get in, say 1100 or 1200 square foot, and there's, we're having, we're noticing current difficulties with the thousand square foot minimum. So that's, the affordable housing, um, audit is, I think that's one of the topics they're going to be touching on.
Okay.
Um, so for right now, we're sticking with that thousand, but that, the reason why it's got the strike through is that's being revisited.
Well, and I guess that's the question, because we're not sticking with it because it was taken out in twenty-two, correct? So we're adding it.
Yep.
So was there, was there a max? When it was struck out in twenty-two with that resolution, was it just that there was a minimum of 250 and, and no max for?
No, the max has always been 1,000.
Okay.
Um, the max has always been 1,000 on that one. Um, so that strike through is.
Yeah, so it's just a little bit, little bit lower. Oh, it, it is us?
Yeah, it, it's.
So then does the question become then, do, do they both need struck, struck through? So you've seen nine-three-four right there. I just, I guess, I'm seeing it struck through in one place but not another.
Yes.
That's the basis of the question.
So I, I believe the strike through is because that was discussions in office.
Okay.
Um, and we're moving in that direction, but we're trying to make sure that's the direction that the entire county's on board with.
So, so.
So we've noticed that it's a problem. So, um, I'd love to say all of this is perfect. We, the amount of regulations, um, that's something that we're looking into and we've identified as an issue. That's why we have a strike through on it, but, um, we probably shouldn't have.
Yeah, fair enough. I was just curious. I didn't know if we're looking at going to more like 1,500 or?
We're, we're looking to see what.
Expanding it out a bit.
Yeah, the, it just seems that that thousand square feet is causing a lot of problems with, uh, the individuals trying to do it. So.
Gotcha.
Since we've identified that, it's, um, it's something that we're working on, but we might have jumped the gun with the strike through.
Yeah, and I guess so, just a more philosophical question maybe, is why have a maximum for an ADU?
That is a very good question, and, and that's.
Parcing through it.
Yeah, that, that's a question I've asked as well.
Okay.
Um, but we're looking into it.
Yeah, fair enough.
I'm just curious how you came up with these numbers to begin with.
I didn't. I can't take credit for that. No, um, when ADUs, um, when the regulations for the ADUs were created, I, I wasn't the director, I was still doing code, um, I don't know the methodology behind the 250 versus 500. I know originally you were only allowed one bathroom, two bedrooms, couldn't be a second story, couldn't exceed a certain height, had to match the, the, um, the facade of the main home. There's a lot of things I didn't like about it. Um, so the second revision of the ADUs have had significant changes to them, and that's what our current, um, regulations are, and I think they need a little bit more.
So we talked about that in office, that was actually in our state with the strike throughs. I just didn't go back up to where it explains your single family or multifamily or ADUs. I didn't strike through that 1,000, but it is something we're proposing not to have a maximum on ADUs.
Okay.
That way it is more helpful for people to have two homes on one lot. They have water and sanitation, you know, see where they could go with 1,500 or 2,000.
Yeah, sure.
That's just something I need to, the purpose of the 1,000.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. I mean, again, why, why have a maximum? And I just, maybe there is a reason, I just.
Yeah, there, there may be. Um, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I kind of, I kind of dislike the thousand. It causes a lot of, lot of hurdles for people. Um, you get a lot of, uh, we have a lot of individuals coming in lately that they, it's parents that want to move on the same lot as their, their kids, the kids want the big old house, the parents want downsized, but they don't want downsized that much. You know, so it's, we're trying to make it a little more user-friendly for people.
Sure.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, I don't know if this plays into anything that you're really talking about, but the ADU, is that just the living space? Because I have seen some of these places that they're building barns and they're putting an apartment in one end of it. That square footage of the ADU, does that include the barn part too, or just the livable space?
Livable space, the heated living space. Um, yeah, it doesn't, so if somebody, if somebody had a main dwelling with a, a shop building with an ADU in it, it's, it would be the heated living space of the ADU.
Right. Um, do.
I had one more.
Yeah, I was going to say, are there any more questions? Keep going.
If anybody else, I didn't mean to take time, but I just was curious a little bit about that ranch hand designation. Um, you know, what, what differentiates that ranch hand versus an ADU or versus just a standalone house? You know, uh, I guess my question is, why, why do we need a separate designation for a ranch hand at all?
So the ranch hand quarters are, are something that have always been in our regulations, and, um, it, let's see, it's got the minimum of 40 acres, you have to have that ag designation, and it has to be for your employees. Um, it's not meant for long-term habitation.
Okay.
Unless it was your lifelong ranch hand that lived there sort of thing.
Yeah.
But it gives the ability for people in livestock industry, um, to be able to house some other people. Um, but it's not necessarily meant to be a long-term dwelling unless it, unless they're a long-term ranch hand. Um, yeah, so we, we didn't want to take anything, we didn't want to take that away and have a, a negative effect on, on anyone.
Uh, the ranch hands, it also won't, won't need an extra permit to go with that. You can meet all of those qualifications, then you can have that second home on your lot and be considered a farm ranch.
Okay. So it's, in that regard, it's less hoops to go through than an ADU?
Yes.
Yeah. But it, it does have those specific requirements, which makes it different than an ADU.
True. Yeah, I was just curious, because I saw the proof of water and all that stuff, so.
Just a quick question. What is it that would make a ranch hand unit? Cause there could be more than one ranch hand living in it and whatnot. But what would keep somebody from renting it to a hunting guide to put all their guiding people in that unit during the hunting season?
So right in there, it's, part of the requirements is a letter stating the circumstances requiring the accessory use in building and the terms of employment for the persons who will inhabit the building. So, um, right there, it starts setting the parameters for who can be inside of it.
There are several places around that have guys that come in and hunt off of a piece of property, and I know that they are staying at them units. Is that a, considered a guest house at that one?
Um, without seeing the exact circumstance, uh, we, we could do a lot of what-ifs here.
Well, I'm just telling you, there's several of them that exist out there, guys.
Yeah, I, I don't doubt it. Um, the ranch hand quarters tries to be kind of specific for who can occupy it. Um, we, we know there's a bunch of stuff occurring up there that may be outside of that, but, um, it would not fall under the ranch hand quarters.
What would fall under?
It's a good question. Maybe bunkhouse, maybe.
Maybe.
Could, could. Yep. Or, or it could be an illegal structure, or a legal structure being used illegally by stacking up with people, because if it wasn't designed for habitation, so there, there's a lot of what-ifs. There's a lot of variables with it.
There could be laws.
Fortunately, there's a lot going on.
That's all I got.
Okay, without cutting anybody off, are there any more questions for Dan concerning chapter five general requirements? If not, I am open to a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the rewrite of chapter five as amended.
I'll second. Thank you, and thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the rewrites as amended to chapter five general requirements.
requirements. Rugel.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. We're going to move down to rewrite of Chapter 7. Boza, Dan, please take us through this, this one.
All right, and just, I'll, once I make those amendments, I'll get them in your guys' folders where you can see that the amendments are there. So, moving on, we have Chapter 7 for Boza. Planning and zoning has recognized the need for a review and update to the regulations. Staff has made no changes to the following Chapter 7 besides a new format, and it references the new Colorado Revised Statute, as noted and highlighted for your review. So, the state changed their statute, so, we changed it to match them. Now, they're in that as a brand-new format, and we didn't touch it.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Are there any questions for Dan concerning the rewrite of Chapter 7, Boza?
Yeah, I just have one. Dan, beginning with about page 46 in that general vicinity, you've got a whole bunch of paragraphs that are lined out, indicating that they're going to be stricken, or are they just going to be relocated somewhere?
Give me one second, can you get that?
There's quite a few from there to the end. Just generally, I'm wondering what's going to happen to all of that stuff.
Boza, is Boza back here?
I think it was Boza here.
The general regulations, they have a lot of strike throughs. Boza doesn't know, because the only thing we're changing is the order of the statute on page 12.
Yeah, starting on page, like, if you look at page 43...
This is only 14 pages?
Am I in the right file here?
The thicker one was the general requirements, the Chapter 5.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were Chapter 5.
Well, irregardless, even if it's the other chapters, you've got a bunch of paragraphs stricken. Are you going to, are they going to be rewritten or put in somewhere else? Even like on, even on the five? And I guess my question is, when are we going to see that language?
On here, we're trying to actually, just trying to get out, not put these ones in the regular regulations. Alteration of non-conforming business use, we don't feel should be able to be altered if it's non-conforming business use. We don't see what it should be another non-conforming business use. If the non-conforming is done, they're not going to be doing it anymore. We don't really need to, we don't want to renew non-conformity. And then, the dairy farms that are struck out, we no longer have any more dairy farms in, we don't have any, so we no longer have any more non-conforming dairy farms here.
We, whenever you guys, what new chapter will be like, the highlight stuff that we added, we'll do different portions of the regulations.
So, on the strike throughs, that factory-built home versus manufactured home, there on the beginning of page five, or section five, we no longer differentiate between the two. So, we're striking that out, because a dwelling is a dwelling. Manufactured home, single-wide, a dwelling is a dwelling, a single-wide falls under type of dwelling. Development requirements, we have development requirements in the new section, but it, we just have it underneath the... Stand by here, one second, a lot of pages. So, we have the allowed uses requiring a permit, and then, we have the special development requirements. So, that one's got a strike through there, because we moved where it was located. Let me get to the correct spot. So, if we jump all the way to the back, where you were discussing the strike throughs. So, for the restoration, right, the 575 restoration, the current regulations have, if you have a non-conforming building, is damaged by fire, other cause, and the cost of replacement of the building is greater than 80% of the market value of the building prior to being damaged. Let's see here, "The future structure or use on the property shall conform with provisions. If the cost of replacing the building is 80% or less than the market value of the building prior to being damaged, restoration must be started within 12 months." We took all that out, and we have it now to where a non-conforming building may be restored whenever necessary or desirable. And we basically made that less restrictive, that portion of it. We didn't, people shouldn't have to be determining the value of their damage, what, this percentage, you could do this, but that percentage, that, somebody's already had a loss. So, we felt that wasn't, that wasn't great. So, we wanted, removing that portion of the regulation. The 578, and alteration of the non-conforming business uses, it is pretty extensive. And if you have, if you have a non-conforming business use, it's one thing to continue that non-conforming use, but if you have a non-conforming site, and you start switching to different non-conforming uses, we, we kind of, we kind of didn't side with that. It's one thing if you want to run the current thing there, but if something doesn't fit, then it, you shouldn't be able to have it there just because something else wasn't right. So, we struck that one out. As Danielle mentioned, we don't have any non-conforming dairy farms anymore, so, that section of the regulation didn't apply, and we're not going to allow a non-conforming dairy farm to come back in. So, unsafe buildings, we don't determine that, that's the building department. The non-conforming mobile home may be structurally altered or repaired in any way permitted by these regulations. Again, that, if somebody is going to be altering their mobile home, they have to apply for a permit with the building department, which then, we see during a review anyways, and as long as they're not expanding and making it more non-conforming, then we're fine with it. So, again, that's a building department thing, we're trying to clean up the regs with it. So, automobile graveyards is defined herein, we don't have any of those. We, the 7, 5714, discussing when something's declared a public nuisance and detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare. So, and that's if it was a non-conforming use in that zone district, and we don't have that going on here. If something, if a non-conforming use was expanding and getting worse, then that's when code enforcement would probably wind up kicking in. So, that, that doesn't really apply. We have that, "Fees for the building department shall be established from time to time by resolution by the board." We don't do that. Expiration of building permits, that's building department. Null-and-void permits, you know, they, in disapproval, if an application for a building permit does not prove, the building inspector of the county, again, that's all building department stuff that was snuck into our regs. So, that's why we took all of that stuff out. And that's it, that's a lot of the strike throughs. So, we, we have building department stuff in there, we have some stuff that went away, so it doesn't apply anymore, but I probably shouldn't have touched on that, so my apologies.
Are there any other questions concerning the rewrites of Chapter 7? Thank you, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rewrites for Chapter 7 as explained.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to approve the rewrites to Chapter 7, B O Z A. All in favor? Gardner?
Aye.
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 Thank you. That concludes all of our new business items, unless there is anything else that needs to be brought up before the board. Commissioners? Dan?
I'm good.
We will adjourn the meeting at 4:01. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
How's our candy ground from hell doing out there?
It's up for sale.
Really?
Yeah, if you ask the interesting guy.